I know we had it.
It's probably intermission. Don't hit, don't stop it again if it's going.
Says it's live right now. There's a viewer, and I'm the viewer.
Oh, he's watching. Can you see it?
Mr. Song, quick question. How does it work?
There it's logged now. Don't touch it.
Are we allowed to receive this at Kirk County?
I believe you are.
Mayor, you're good.
So we're back again. Mr. Gregory, regarding the announcement, Lord Rock had a full house. So we'll proceed with announcement, parents and members, items for the community interest. Mr. Gregory.
Just wanted to bring up a quick notification. We have a unique situation in the city. Five years ago, I brought this Emily, Emily Moore, to help celebrate her 100th birthday. She's celebrating her 105th birthday this Thursday. She is as spry as ever, and I'm sure she would love anybody to stop by and say wish her a happy birthday this Thursday. Emily Moore.
And Mr. Gregory, Mr. Mayor?
Just briefly, during the last couple of months, I've talked to many of the citizens about their desire to have an access to their councilman. And so starting in the month of December, I want to make a time and place, maybe a restaurant or business, publicize it in advance, so that anyone in the city can sit down over food or maybe refreshments. But I want to hear from the citizens. So I guess I'm speaking not just to everyone here, but everyone who's listening on live streaming, because I want to hear those ideas. And I challenge all of my colleagues here tonight to do the very same, so that those in the community can address them with their priorities and things they're thinking about. Now, the other thing I wanted to mention is that we're going to be dealing with some things on the agenda today, but they may be continuing for the next several meetings. And those items are a composition of boards and committees and commissions. And this is an appeal to those in the community at large to consider getting active, to consider serving on one of those boards or commissions. And so as we go forward, those that are interested should probably direct their interest to the mayor or the city council or the city manager, so that we can look at any kind of information that would help us make those decisions. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Sanders.
I'm there.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'd like to recognize this evening Castle Hills Women's Club for the remarkable job that they do all year long, but particularly during this holiday season to call attention to a program that they have underway known as Reeds Across America. This is an effort to lay reeds on the graves of veterans during the holiday season at our national cemeteries. The Castle Hills Women's Club is involved in this. It brings in some modest amount of revenue for the Women's Club to support the great work that they do. And certainly it's an excellent time of year for all of us to honor, whether it's a personal, a family member, friend, or the state veteran in general, by supporting the Reeds Across America Network. So thank you to the Castle Hills Women's Club.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I would like to add is this Saturday, we're going to be partnering with American Red Cross for a program called Down the Alarm. We'll be going to homes, checking to see if you have fire alarms, if your fire alarms are functioning correctly. If you don't have fire alarms, we will install up to three fire alarms per home. Fire department will also be helping us out doing free fire assessments. I believe the police department will be doing a basic assessment through your home. This is a great opportunity for us to kind of get ahead of any potential issues and help our fire department and our police department, so that they can do what they need to do and give them the most time as possible to help us. And I'm really appreciative of the Red Cross for sponsoring all the smoke alarm records after these and volunteers. It'll be this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. If you would like to email your list to Mr. Rappley, we can put your house on the list of houses that we go to. Thank you all so much. Next, we are going to proceed with the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are self-defined, which we're having a discussion and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion. We'll be acting with the council members' request. The consent agenda is for consideration by the city council only and not subject to other session.
Mayor, do you approve of the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a first and Mr. Mayor has a second, Mr. Mayor. Any session? On paper. Captain Adams, any council? First, I'm going to do this as a public hearing on FY 2020 Crime Control Prevention District. Budget as approved and recommended by the CCPD Board. It is 7:01. We're going to open the public hearing. Do you have a way to vote seat? Or Chief, you want to preface that?
No, sir. I was just jumping the gun a little bit, but wait for the public hearing to finish.
Okay. Do we have anyone who would like to speak? Okay, it is 7:01. We will close the public hearing. I have number two discussion, a possible action order number 2019-11-49, ordered by the City Council, City Council of Castle Hills Texas approving the Crime Control Prevention District operating budget for the fiscal year beginning in January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020. Chief, your turn.
Just available for questions, Mayor. Expedite. Efficient government, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor.
Have this been approved by the current board or prior board?
The...
I asked the question before, so I didn't know.
Yes, ma'am. It was the, the city board at the time that we presented it to council did not look it to the appointees that weren't in office or in, on the board of directors at the meeting before September 1st.
So this was done after the board recommended September 1st, as I asked that previously, if you would have that meeting?
It was before.
Okay, well, again, I don't understand, you know, why we keep doing that year after year. We're supposed to appoint people and they're supposed to vote out the budget. It should be the board that's going to be overseeing that budget and not the previous board, given the fact that it was a previous board, which it was in this case.
Yes, ma'am. Operation is what's always been done. I inherited that way. I didn't, I didn't see a need to change the, change the direction as council, the final agreement already. I was just citizens recommending or recommendations of councils for their approval. I followed the historical operation matter.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of ordering December 2019-11-19, ordered by the City Council, City of Castle Hills Texas, approving the Crime Control Prevention District operating budget for fiscal year beginning in January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020.
Second. You have a first and a second. Any concession? On paper? All the same? Or all of those are done? Same? Okay, so four approving and one saying it's the same. Discussion of possible action on Resolution Number 2019-11-19, a resolution of the City of Castle Hills Texas approving the 2019 cert by tax roll. Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, ma'am. This is part of the process. It goes this out and certified by tax roll for 2019 tax rate. Given these specific questions, I have the speakers here to answer as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Council, do you have a motion?
I have my motion that approve the Resolution Number 2019-11-19, approve the 2019 tax roll for the State Castle Hills.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a second. I have a question. Do we have a session? On paper? unanimous. Thank you so much, Council. Moving on to I have number four. Discussion of possible action on Resolution 2019-11-19-A, a resolution of the City of Castle Hills Texas authorizing the city manager to transfer the excess funds above the six-month backup operating reserve to the supplemental street and drainage maintenance fund. Mr. Rappley?
Yes, ma'am. This is just a formal process of putting a resolution and the excess funds that came in, so the general is their back to supplemental streets. This is just a formal process to make sure that it's transferred.
The vote?
You have a first and a second, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Second, Mr. Yankson, discussion? Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Rappley, I know this is coming up later, but is anything going to be done at the unlevelled condition of honeysuckle where it was recently fixed?
Mr. Mayor, I would put this on the agenda. Mr. Song, is that what you're saying?
Well, I believe the city manager can answer this one question, but there cannot be discussion. If there does need to be discussion, it will have to be put on the agenda for a future meeting. But the city manager can respond with a statement of the fact and answer the question if he's got the information.
Well, Mr. Rappley, if he responds, perhaps he can.
Again, is there a portion of honeysuckle, I mean, balance?
There's, there's two sections where it meets. On honeysuckle itself and then on Wu-John, and did either place, did they level it? Bump in each case because it dropped.
If it's any portion of the Amber construction project that friends upon honeysuckle or Wu-John, we can address that with the contract if you're ready.
Any suggestions, Mr. Rappley? Do we have any discussion, Mr. Gregory?
Yes, it's critical this every time. It's just a very critical thing, and this is time to...
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, council, I would move approval of Resolution Number 2019-11-19A, a resolution of the City of Castle Hills Texas authorizing the city manager to transfer the excess funds above the six-month backup operating reserve to the supplemental street and drainage maintenance fund.
Mr. Mayor, I believe, and I believe Ms. Winger made a motion to adopt this resolution. Mr. Sanderson, second.
My apologies. Then I call the questions.
We have another question. On paper? Unanimous. Thank you so much, Council. I have a refined discussion of possible action on the selection of a city auditor performing audit services for fiscal year 2019 and then optional year for fiscal year 2020. Mr. Rappley?
Yes, Mayor. As requested or authorized by City Council, we sent out RFPs. We submitted them, I believe, November 6th timeframe, excuse me, October, and published a notice and put on the website. We had a deadline, if I recall. Laura, you have that deadline.
November 6th.
November 6th, and we have received one proposal for this, which was from Armstrong Vaughn Associates, which was our previous auditors. In this case, in your backup is a proposal from Armstrong Vaughn Associates, where they discuss their services for auditing for FY 19, and actually provide another senior audit manager who will be doing this instead of the previous auditor, Debbie, I believe, who was an auditor in the last two years with Armstrong Vaughn. Mr. Magnus here, if you have any questions related to this firm or the process or auditing services approved.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. You have a motion?
I have a question.
You have a question? Ms. Winger, please.
I'm pulling my purse here.
Brian Magnus.
I'm sorry?
Brian Magnus from Armstrong Vaughn Associates.
Okay, well, I have a question for the city manager. So I guess, I guess what you're saying is that he did everything that he was supposed to do. Is that correct?
I was authorized to send out requests for proposals and follow the process.
Did he let us know who he sent them to? Because I didn't know.
We published the notice. We had it on our website. We actually sent out to a number of accounting firms, not only at the TML conference, but Miss Deegan's reached out to other accounting firms she knew of as well to submit. We got one inquiry from another accounting firm, but at the end of the day, we had a deadline, and this was the only proposal received. And in the backup, the backup there is the proposal and the steps we took to issue the RFP.
Yes, I'm aware of that. I read it. What I noticed here is who the RFQs were sent.
I, I reached out to A B I P.
I'm sorry?
I reached out to A B I P, which is another firm in the San Antonio area that I've worked with. I reached out to make sure Armstrong Vaughn received it.
I don't think you reached out.
I sent an email and let them know. And when I was at TML, I stopped by several booths and let them know that in October, we would be going out. I didn't, it was not out at the time of the conference, but I did reach out. I think Belcheck Harris was one of them, and there were several other, and I just mentioned that the Castle Hills would be putting out an RFQ to be on the watch. But I didn't, it was not out at the time of the conference.
Which is, I would like to have a list of the RFQs that we sent out.
Again, the only one that was sent out was to A B I P and Armstrong Vaughn.
Well, there was one sent out.
Two.
Wait, two sent out, one and one sent out?
Well, I didn't actually send it out. I just told them there was an RFQ slash P in the paper, and that if they wanted to, that it was on the website.
Yeah, I'm just trying to clarify, Laura, because Mr. Rappley just said that he sent out one RFQ, so you're saying now there were two?
That I sent out, yes, ma'am.
And the others, like you said, when we were at the TML conference, we notified others that we had a proposal out. We followed the process.
Websites, you said, you used the true websites.
We put it on the city website, and we published the notice in the paper to notify that we were going out for proposal. That's the standard process to follow in any case.
Only one person, one organization, found?
That's the only signal we got.
What about the TML website? Was it on that?
I don't know if it was on the TML website. I did not put it on the TML website. Again, we put it on our website and published it in the paper.
Okay, well, I only missed out asking. This is the first time I've ever heard that we've only gotten one response from, you know, there's so many auditing firms around, and the problem is that we've been with this firm for some time, and it's really not good policy to continue with the same firm year after year after year. And you can discuss that, so I'm very disappointed. I don't know if there's anything to do with that, but I would like capitalists, and basically you just tell them it was whatever firm, and that's it. We don't know that anybody is particularly looking at our website, which is why it should have been on the TML website. That's what we should have put. So I don't know what else happened, but you say we're going to get a different auditor this year, the state three days auditor? Is that correct?
Yes, the firm submitted Mr. Magnus here as the lead manager. Again, as I indicated between Laura and I and the agenda, if no statutory requirements change audit firms, it's obviously good practice to go out over a few years. This is the case we did. We did go out for, or request for proposals. And we followed the process to notify.
Thank you, Mr. Jerry. Questions, anyone? Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion that the city council, we approve this election of Armstrong Vaughn Associates for fiscal year 2019 and consider for fiscal year 2020.
Second. So we have President Maney, second. Mr. Rappley?
Mayor, I'm sorry, we have questions. Do you have a question? I would, just a clarification, Mr. Rappley, so I heard the suggestion that this should be on the TML website, which I believe would be a website that focuses on cities all across Texas. Is it typical for your municipality to go outside of its general city or county to search for auditors to perform these functions?
TML does have a ceiling that you can put certain RFQs or RFQ proposals. I've really seen legal, we actually put it on TML when we were looking for legal services. And that was the only time we put it on TML. Other than that, it's like individual employee positions we're looking for on TML.
So would I, so would we hate to recall that and expect that this will be posted on the TML website?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And again, this is a council's wish and desire. That's a process. We can go back out and use TML, but again, that hasn't been the practice at least since I've been here for changing auditors in the last two years, as I think.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarification. Mr. Sanderson?
For what date did we publish the RFP, the review?
That was on? That was on October 16th.
It's thirty minutes, so they're bound to have like five weeks, but the normal period of time to assess those to be able to, or some?
Typically, yeah. And again, Laura, Miss Deegan's has been doing, or has been the finance director for a number of years and has done this in other cities. So from a process standpoint, I would refer to her on anything replacing or changing an auditor in this case. For instance, Miss Deegan's helped me work on this timeline, and it was pretty standard with other cities for issuing this notice and looking for an auditor at this point.
I was looking for more competition, where we have better selection of organizations to choose from. But it'd be nice to figure out something, probably should be able to have an encouraged competition.
Again, council, and I wouldn't know if this is normal to get one or two of auditing services. I do know, again, when we mail out the proposals for legal services, in my experience in other cities, for particular legal services, you obviously get a lot more proposals. So this is, I would refer to Miss Deegan's and her previous municipality she worked in, if this is pretty standard, because there are not too many firms out there. And I know that, again, in the backup there in the proposal, that Armstrong Vaughn assists a number of cities within this region, so they're well done. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Do we have any questions? Do you have a motion on the floor? On paper? Unanimous. Thank you, council. I have number six, discussion of possible action on reverse, such as examining the water system in the amount of $21,658.30 for the SAW's portion of the Castle Hills Street Maintenance Project pursuant to the interlocal agreement between SAW and Castle Hills dated March 18, 2016. Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, ma'am. We had received a request earlier this year from SAW to reimburse them for some advanced funding they did. The project was due in 2016. Once it was concluded, the dollars that were supposed to be reimbursed for SAW's for their portion of work were not reimbursed at this time. So they, as soon as a letter of request reimbursed this money, about $21,658. And working on this and Miss Deegan's, we look back to what we do in advanced funding from SAW's. We have an interlocal fund to put the money in, and apparently, at this time, their previous administration, I assume some of the money was, Miss Deegan's elaborate, used for a number of change orders that were done for that particular project back in 16 and 17. Here regardless, it's part of the interlocal to reimburse them for unused funds. And so at this point, that's what I'm recommending, because I don't want to jeopardize any future advanced funding from SAW's. SAW just gave us 1.3 for Amber. And as we move forward, we're banking Wind Tower. We will be doing another interlocal for advanced funding. And so we don't want to do anything that would jeopardize that relationship and or interlocals for any advanced funding, because if we were to not have an advanced money agreement from SAW, the city would have to pay for it, and they would reimburse us.
Mr. Gregory? It is a witness for what Mr. Gregory talked about. Please, here, do you got the check tonight?
And what street is this for?
Ms. Winger, this was what I did in researching and finding out this was part of multiple streets as far as the Castle Hills Street Maintenance Project. It ranged from Adobe, Danube, Gladiola, Primaria, Mlosa, Zordia, East Castle Lane, and West Castle Lane.
Okay, thank you.
Council, you have a motion? Mr. Gregory, second, Ms. Winger, on paper? Unanimous. Thank you so much, ma'am. I have number seven, I'm getting on the improvements, the City of Castle Hills City Hall. Mr. Rappley?
Mayor, council, I'll try to do this pretty quick. May I give a update on where we're at on building improvements and other core security projects? At that time, we were probably 78% through $50,000 dedicated for building improvements back in May. We finished up the last set of projects. What I want to do is be able to provide you an account for all the building improvements, all the improvements under court security, court technology, seizure funds, and then outline future improvement projects. One of the things that more I wanted to do was show you these, because again, at the end of the day, we're done with all building maintenance projects. We came in just under $50,000 for all the improvements we've done here in the building. Under court security, as I go quickly down the list, the ballistic panels that were installed, the second floor of storage, improvements for court records, corridor access for police and administration for console access. We got away from the key pad system. And then the perimeter security cameras, exterior building and servers to do the perimeters of the building itself and improve security. Under court technology is the electrical work we did here for the podium. Out of this, we also did audio improvements, and most recently purchased a screen protector, if you see. The seizure funds were used for the cover parking for police vehicles. And then, as you indicated below, future improvements, as I remind you, we dedicated about $30,000 of seed money to continue with other improvements in and around the building for a few projects I listed. Just wanted to bring the two councils' attention. Part of it is because if we're discussing maybe the budget amendment, and then next month, we'll bring another budget amendment to clarify, obviously, between court and security and technology funds, where we dedicated these projects to.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. And this is just a note. There's no questions. We will launch at I have number eight, discussion of possible action order number 2019-11-19-A, ordered by the City Council, the City of Castle Hills Texas, approving the budget amendment for FY 2019. And I believe we can add some equal slide with all of this. Ms. Newclan? She is on, and that is all we have sent up. Do we have a motion? Or I'm sorry, Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, ma'am. As I indicated, this is for the general fund, and obviously I wanted to bring the attention of council because of the line items, specifically under the legal line item being over that area. And then the SAW's reimbursed as well. One of the, one of the positive things is, and it's always good in the budget process, is we underestimated some revenues, which is actually pretty positive in the interest and past worth. And we wanted to make sure we account for some of the other dollars we received from the claim on the South Lansing check we received in the Landville. So we're just reconciling our revenues, and then again, under the expenditures, we have the election expenses, the attorney legal fees. As we indicated during the budget process, our project capital insurance went up to the city. And so further down under capital, the money we mentioned some wasn't accounted for. That was where a driver had hit that, so we're working on trying to recruit some of those costs as well. And under administration equipment purchase, we had to go forward and move and purchase a new server. And under administration equipment purchase, we had to go forward and move and purchase a new server for courts and police at the time. And so we had to purchase those. This is merely for transparency and wanted to bring it to Council's attention that we were over in some of these line items, specifically attorney and now for the SAWS payment as well. We think at the end of the day, you know, we're hoping there's some salary savings, line items further down. As we get to the end of the year, we'll probably balance this out. But I just want to make sure it's done with amendments and mostly just transparency, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley.
I'd like to move to table aside, because I don't believe we have sufficient information here. And I'd like to see all of these bills so that we know what we're voting on, so I move to table.
I'm sorry. We have a first and a second table, on favor. All the votes? Motion to table bills?
I would still like to request bills, like to see what we're talking about.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, Mr. Rappley.
If somebody has a concern, I have to say, I'm not.
Sure, I would remind you all, we've had these stacks for four days. If you had questions about that, that would be a great opportunity to send Mr. Rappley, Ms. Gregory, and Ms. Deegan's. And you know, they could produce it in time, but I understand your question, will proceed, do we have a motion? Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I propose that the City Council of Castle Hills approve the amendment to fiscal year 2019 budgeting amount indicated within ordinance number 2019-11-19-8.
Second, we have a first and a second. So there will be a session. On favor. All the votes? So it passes three to two. Okay, moving on, bold business, discussion of hostile action on lawsuit filed with City of Castle Hills versus City of Castle Hills, on number 2019-CI-14595. We would recover attorney's fees as possible, executive session pursuant to section 551-071 of the Texas Government Consultation with Attorney. We had some people signed up for this one, not to the list, is Mr. Squire. Mr. Squire, we have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, I'm just going to a change in board. I was up here previously when this agenda first came up. I just want to reiterate the desire to know the amount of funds that were expended to defend the city from a lawsuit brought forth by Ms. Winger, Mr. Sanderson, and Ms. Gonzalez. And then, I guess, to the question, does it make sense that we try to get those funds back for the citizens in the city? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Squire. Next, we have Mr. McCormick.
Glad for your 207, Carol Wood. Let me point out that we have, as I understand it, around $67,000 worth of attorney's fees that are due in the manual from City of Castle Hills, which are not covered by insurance. Based on the lawsuit brought by Sylvia Gonzalez, Ms. Winger, and Mr. Sanderson. Now, while I believe that a lawsuit to recover those attorney's fees probably is not a practical consideration, and I don't think it's appropriate for two hundred and fifty thousand to be on direct dutyary interest in the result of a vote, to make a vote on how this should be exposed to. Reason I think it's not practical, of course, to bring a lawsuit on it, is because I know from my experience as a practicing lawyer that judges in Bay County do not like to give attorney's fees. Bringing another lawsuit and incur additional attorney's fees, and then we're going to have a question on the part of the judge about having those set. Now, the judges have all sorts of considerations in their own, at least of which is that attorneys vote. And attorneys have a large number of contacts. So they might, generally speaking, make an even-handed distribution of good and bad, and remember the real solid was split, maybe. I know it's easier to remember that the fact that the solid had a false mother stone in the court there. So I don't recommend either of those courses of action. So I recommend that the two persons who have a cumulative answers from the outcome of the vote, hear some sounds.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Next, we have Dr. Mike Flynn.
Dr. Mike Flynn, although Harrison Lane. I don't take a prepared note, so I'll beg your indulgence, Mr. Gregory, if I can put on a little bit. This whole messaging about because Ms. Gonzalez was not properly sworn in to office, required by law. Mr. Sanderson's done a great job of trying to obfuscate the facts and defend that position. And the state law says that by law, it's a black and white debate, that she did not fulfill obligations. Whose responsibility, whose fault that is, is irrelevant. So, at that point, this city council had the votes to reappoint Ms. Gonzalez. Instead, people on the council at that time decided to pursue the sports version policy and create a temporary, pursue a temporary screening order for that has cost the city upwards of $70,000. They chose this suit. So in my opinion, the city should seek reimbursement from those two, those three individuals. I agree that it's acknowledged Mr. McCormick's comments that there is a cost, but at some point, principles should take over for cost, especially if we had other options. Given that Mr. Sanderson and Ms. Winger are parties that suit, I agree with Mr. McCormick that they should accuse themselves of any kind of vote. To do otherwise, in my opinion, would be additional evidence of incompetence and official misconduct. Now, I think that a reasonable solution would be to reach a negotiated settlement where Mr. Sanderson and Ms. Winger would agree to retire from this council and not have to pay, not have to, the city pursue those funds. I think that a legal agreement could be reached. Of that, I think I have no more comments, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flynn. Mr. Sawn, do you have a comment?
Mayor, I believe Mr. Rappley, at the beginning of this agenda, passed out the form of proposed resolution that by which the council would, if it is adopted, go ahead and enter me to an executive session for consultation with the city attorney and to get legal advice from the city attorney. Attached to that proposed resolution is a copy of Attorney General opinion J. M. Dashel 1004, which is referenced in the proposed motion. At this time, in order to preserve the attorney's client privilege and protection, I would respectfully ask that the council at least consider that proposed motion.
Mr. Mayor, if you're...
Mr. Mayor, considering the Texas government wrote section 551, form 071, consultation with attorney, I respectfully move that the city council go into executive session without Leslie Winger and Mark Sanderson attending. Consistent with Texas Attorney General's opinion, J. M. 1004, 1989, to consult with the city attorney and to receive legal advice from the city attorney. Considering the lawsuit filed against the city and others this year, I still give it's office, Leslie Winger and Mark Sanderson.
Second, Mr. Gregory, second. We have a first and a second, Mr. Gregory.
Mr. Sawn, inasmuch as what we had as ratio two, is similar but not identical to what we have as item on agenda item nine. Can we do this at this time as a replacement or supplement agenda item nine?
Well, Mr. Gregory, the wording of agenda item nine is discussion of hostile action on the lawsuit filed Sylvia Gonzalez et al. versus City of Castle Hills et al. Cause number 2019 CI 14595, including recovery of attorney's fees with possible executive session noted on the agenda. So I think the motion is germane to the agenda item. I spoke to an assistant attorney general twice about this potential action. First, to confirm that Attorney General opinion J. M. 1004 had not been modified or withdrawn. And then, this afternoon, to confirm that in my discussion with him, even the current status of the lawsuit does not make the executive session inappropriate or improper, since to have the parties adverse to the city in the litigation present when the city, rest of the members of the governing body, are going to get briefing on the legal aspects of the potential action. We heard during the citizens to be heard, two different views on that just a few moments ago. And I think the who would benefit the city council to, without the presence of the parties who would be directly affected, to hear a little bit more on those subjects.
Thank you. All in favor?
Oh, we got you, Mark.
We're entering to executive session right now, all the votes?
The discussion.
Have seen.
Mayor, Mr. Sanderson wants to further discuss this before the vote is taken, and I think it'd be reasonable to recognize.
Okay, I have a sixth thing.
Yeah, quick question. So, Mr. Sawn, Mr. T. from out of here, would you believe strictly in length that you are conflicted or nonconflicted? If you can explain me the detail of it.
Mr. Sanderson, I do not believe I am conflicted. I believe that I have duty to this governing body to tell the rest of the governing body my legal opinion in answer to their questions. I will not be voting, they will not be voting in executive session. They'll just be hearing the information that we've been able to research and determine as to the status of this matter and the relative pros and cons from a legal perspective of, and the chances of success from a legal perspective. And this is not an action in which I am personally seeking anything. I am simply willing to action by the governing body at the September meeting, when a vote was made by the governing body, to direct the city attorney to research whether or not it would be possible for the city to seek to recover attorney's fees in this litigation.
Would your law firm be the one to request recovery of fees?
The City of Castle Hills would be the one recovering these fees. This would be an action on behalf of the City of Castle Hills. It would not be an action that this governing body could reach as to whether my law firm sought to recover any attorney's fees for covering the costs that I incurred and my law firm incurred, depending me in this lawsuit. My lawsuit, my law firm would not receive one cent, depending on what this governing body decides to do in regard to seeking reimbursement for the attorney's fees the city has incurred.
Thank you, Mr. Sawn, we have the one table, all in favor, proceeding to executive session. All opposed? Have seen? Okay, we're entering to executive session, it is 7:30.
Mayor, you'll announce the tip today as well, number nineteen.
I'm sorry, number nineteen, 7:30. Good for you.